Welcome, everybody. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance. Chris, you're up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation under God, in whose will liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Call to order, roll call, please.
Troy Anderson.
President.
Patrick Dean.
President.
Dwayne Bebo.
President.
John Bearchild.
Here.
Christopher Gabby.
Here.
Patty LeBlanc.
Here.
Ed Maren.
Here.
Richard Sears.
Here.
David Trudeau.
Here.
And Oscar.
Here.
Result that the interns to pretend at a schools are commenced to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. Motion, please.
Motion.
Who's that?
David.
David, second.
Director.
Okay. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna turn this off before I get in trouble. Presentations. First one is the athletic and extracurricular update. Mr. Prichet.
Evening, everybody.
You guys got anything on the screen? All right, moving.
I'm gonna stand down. Does this stuff go on?
Yeah.
I'm gonna stand up. I'm gonna stand down here so I'm not having my back to everybody. I first want to thank everyone for allowing me to present the committee's work. This is not my work, this is our committee's work. Spent a lot of time, I know, with Mr. Futere and the Athletic Committee, going through the handbook, the Athletic Handbook that we created in 2020, and taking a deep dive into where are we currently in athletics, and what are some of the things that we need to look at, address, and then update. So, again, this is the work of our committee, and super proud of some of the updates and things that we're able to do to not keep the document stagnant but moving forward, and continue to look at how to continue to improve our co-curriculars and obviously our athletic program. I'm not gonna go through every bullet, these are all the changes that were made in our handbook. And again, the amount of time and effort that went in, I just want to thank everyone for their time and commitment in taking the time out of their days to go through the handbook. It's a 26-page document, and these are the changes that you're gonna find within the document. The biggest ones that I'd like to highlight, if you look down to bullet number four, emergency action plans, next year, New York State is going to require that every team has an emergency action plan. If you remember what happened with Martin Mimmel and the Buffalo Bills last year, and you look around and see some of the news articles of things that are happening to athletes, emergency action plans are not only essential, but can obviously be life savings. So, next year, New York State will require emergency action plans. We have asked our coaches to do that this year, and to not only have them, but to practice their plans with their athletes. Having an emergency action plan, not practicing it, obviously is gonna be useful in a stressful situation. The other layer that we've added to that is making sure in our emergency action plans that we have a plan, what happens if the coach goes down? What are the responsibilities of the athletes? What are the responsibilities of the team? Who goes to get the AED? Do the kids know where the AED is located? Who calls 911? Where on our campus do we not have the cell service? Where do I need to run to get cell service to be able to call emergency services? If you saw the newspaper today, you see what just happened down in Plattsburgh State at the club hockey game, where an athlete dropped and no one knew where the AED was. Thank God someone did CPR and saved that student's life. That was very assuming Plattsburgh last week. So, to be able to have these plans in place ahead of the state mandate, I'm super thrilled with, and really wanna thank our coaches for being willing participants in making that happen. If you look down to limit texting to student athletes, there was, I think, a pretty healthy discussion on communication measures with our student athletes. What is allowed, what is not allowed? We brought up the concerns of texting students. What happens if the coach is texting the student athlete? What are some of the positives of that, some of the things that can go wrong? So, we did not take texting out, but we did recommend that we're gonna limit texting to student athletes. We did remove Facebook as a coach's means of communicating with our team. I don't think that should be a platform that coaches are using weekly to communicate with their parents and their student athletes, and the committee obviously agreed. Final forums. Final forums is a platform that came online for us here at DeepinTown. This is our second year using it. When this document was created, Final Forums was not available and nor part of what we do here. So, taking a look at things like rosters, signups, code of conducts, storage of coaching documents, travel releases, communications, these are all things that coaches would have to annually collect from their team and store. So, we don't have to worry about a coach losing the code of conduct or having to collect a travel release. We collect that and do that for them all through Final Forums. All those documents are then, obviously, kept and stored digitally. Coaching certification updates. Coaching certification has changed from when this document was created to today. So, being able to update that, having references for our coaches. The other nice thing, I think, that we added, if you look down to the second bullet from the bottom, varsity coaches are going to assist with evaluations of other coaches in our program, and when there is an opening, a coaching position opening in their program, they're gonna be a part of that interview process. We kind of implemented that this year, but that's gonna become formalized, obviously, with our new handbook updates. You will notice it says, if available, there are times where we don't have a varsity coach. And I know we talked a lot about, what do we do if the coach is not available? Can we still have that interview committee run? And we will, but again, that's something new that you'll see in there. The other change is evaluation meetings will be held 30 days from the end of the varsity season in that given form. So, whenever varsity football ends, 30 days from that date, all evaluations through the program will take place. And I think that will help, obviously, keep things fresh and have healthy discussions. Evaluation meetings, the true gift of those is the conversation. So, when you can have a coach in those meetings and you can talk about the season, and we can talk about things that we can do together to get better, I think that's where the growth comes, not only for the coach, but for the athletic department. How can we better help you do your job? I think that's another part of the conversation. Some other changes, and again, I'm not gonna go through bullet by bullet, just wanna highlight some of the big ones. If you see third bullet down, added the NISPA windshield thunder lightning policy for safety protocols, those are things that were added to the NISPA handbook that were not found in our coaching handbook. Again, those are NISPA mandates. Looking down to coaches' keys and building access updated, coaches at the end of the year, in our old handbook, were asked to hand in their keys and to have their badges would no longer work to have access to the building. We want to encourage our coaches to be here and work with our student athletes year-round. I saw Coach Score on Sunday when I was here, out working with our tennis athletes doing state qualifying. Football, offseason, offseason lifting, workouts, basketball, open gyms. We want to encourage our coaches to be here with our student athletes, offering those opportunities to our kids, taking their keys away and cutting off building access, I don't think fosters that, so that's something we're gonna be changing. Adding ISS to school suspensions, in the handbook, there was only mention of out-of-school suspension. We do have in-school suspensions, and we took the language from our current code of conduct, and we added that to our coaches handbook, because that was something that was missing. Again, something that was just overlooked. Disqualification forms for section seven are now mandated to be done through a Google form by the coach. So, if a student athlete gets a yellow card in a soccer game, that athlete would go on and fill out the form, so the section can keep track of yellow cards, red cards, disqualifications, and ejections, which is nice, because we have a running spreadsheet where we can see kind of where our kids are, have those conversations with them when appropriate. Updating the flowchart for EPP, if you look at the EPP regulations and you looked at our flowchart and what was in the handbook, they did not align. So, we aligned those so that it was clear for our community what the EPP process is not only statewide, but also Board of Education approved policy. Updated the directory and the district social emotional programs, to make sure that we're including things like seven mindsets, we've got some of our old programs that were in there. Adding coaching evaluation form, you must submit a letter of intent to the evaluation form. We did not have that in the evaluation, and there was confusion from coaches, they would always ask, do I have to submit a letter of intent if I had a good evaluation? And the answer is yes. When those positions are posted, coaches still have to submit letter of intent, because they are annual appointments by the Board of Education. The two things we would be adding are sample practice plans. There's a lot of mention about practice plans in the document, and I think it was Mr. Futere who brought that up, adding practice plans, some sample practice plans. So, we're gonna be pulling some coaches and asking for some current up-to-date practice plans to be able to put in there, just as a reference for coaches. We did not feel appropriate to mandate a certain format for coaches, we're just asking that they do really detailed practice plans and make sure that they save them state mandated up to seven years. And then we will also be adding an updated letter from our school medical director. The letter that was in there was from Dr. Patna, who's no longer our school medical director. So, we're gonna be getting a new letter from Lord Robinson, who's our new school medical provider. So, those are some of the updates that you'll find in the handbook. These two pages are every change that was made. I know in Board of Education portal, I changed the document, and then I highlighted in yellow all the changes. So, even if there was one word change, that was highlighted for you. So, you have that full document, the yellow is where the changes are, and that's where you see the bullet points for the presentation. I didn't think 26 pages of scroll would benefit us here tonight. So, those are the changes. The other thing that is new, and I think we spent the most time on, was the co-curricular evaluation form. I remember being on the committee in 2019 and 2020 when we created the handbook, and it was supposed to be co-curricular and athletics. Unfortunately, the co-curricular piece was left out in certain areas. One of the areas that was left out was an evaluation form. We had an evaluation form for coaches, but we did not have one for co-curriculars. So, what we did is, you'll see the advisor at the top will fill out your information, and then in the middle is the chunk of information that the person who's doing the evaluation would be evaluating. And what we're evaluating is the elements of a Google Calendar that the co-curricular advisor must fill out, and all that is, is a calendar that shared with the advisor. They put in their meeting dates and the times that they're meeting with their kids or activities that they're doing. So, if they're doing a bottle drive, they're just gonna throw in that Google Calendar that the middle school drama club's gonna be doing a bottle drive at the fire department on this day, and you would see that in the Google Calendar. Google Classroom, every co-curricular would have a Google Classroom. Parents could be added to that Google Classroom, and it would be a great communication tool for the students, the teacher, and the parents to kind of keep in mind of what's going on. Final forums is used in athletics, we really didn't have anything for co-curriculars, so having every advisor have a Google Classroom would be able to open that up to be able to communicate and sort documents. The other nice thing about a Google Classroom is we have a lot of athletes that also take part of a lot of co-curriculars. So, what happens with that student athlete that misses the drama club, how do they get that information? So, what they'll be able to do is go to that Google Classroom and get the notes from what happened in that meeting, or some document that the advisor may have posted, and after practice, they could go check the classroom and be able to get that. So, I think it's something that's worked in our classrooms when we did remote learning. It would be, obviously, something we can use to our advantage now with co-curriculars. Summary of clubs provided the first day of school. One of the goals that I would like to see happen is that every building would have a, I would call it like a handbook or a directory of all the co-curriculars that are offered in their building. So, Principal Nelson would have a handbook to give to any new student coming in, saying, this is what we have to offer here at DeepinTown. Obviously, sports are available, and they all have the sport offerings. How do they know what middle school drama club is? What is that? So, a parent, student athlete would be able to have that, a principal, guidance counselor, we could encourage kids to be able to, obviously, be more involved. The other nice piece to that is that's something we could post on our school website and hopefully draw more interested clubs and activities for kids that may not be interested in football or soccer or wrestling, the classic sports that, you know, kids always know about student athletes and some of the sport offerings, but they typically don't know about all our clubs and what they all do. Records maintained, that's more meetings and constitutions and things like that, making sure that the officers understand how to keep records, and that the teacher, obviously, or the advisor maintains those records. And then fundraising. Fundraising is a big piece to what clubs do here at DeepinTown, and making sure that we give our advisors the proper training to be able to understand the things that they have to do as an advisor, the financial requirements in New York State. So, I know we've already had one training, Mr. Lapierre and Mr. Gadway put on a really nice training. I think we had 88% of our advisors in attendance. We have two more to give, but they got almost an hour-long presentation on all the do's and don'ts in New York State when it comes to running a club and dealing with fundraisers and money, and how do we deal with that, how to turn in taxes. So, if we ever happen on it, we can say that we have trained every one of our advisors on what to do. Telling them to do it and expecting them just to know, to me, isn't good enough. Providing that opportunity for them to have that training, and you see that again as one of the requirements. So, you will see NA next to some of them, if you look at pending the mandated financial training. We are going to require the elementary yearbook club advisor to attend the mandatory financial training if they don't handle money. If they don't touch money, handle money, they don't need to attend that meeting. Mrs. Rankin, I see her in the audience, she does our DeepinTown chronicles, I don't think she needs to attend because she doesn't deal with money. But clubs that do, like Monta UN, that would be an advisory that should attend that meeting. And then on the bottom, it offers an opportunity for the evaluator to offer comments, and that space is just, you know, it's a great job this year, add some nice things, evaluate some of the fundraisers, the unique things that that club is able to participate in, to have on record for future years. It's signed at the bottom, and then you'll see satisfactory, probationary, and unsatisfactory. Those are the three metrics that are used in our coaching evaluation. So, if that advisor was deemed satisfactory or probationary, as long as they meet the requirements for probationary, whatever the tip plan is, they would be recommended the following year to Board of Education for approval to that position. If they were unsatisfactory, they would not have a recommendation from the evaluator to Board of Education for the next year to maintain that position. So, it really, I think, does a nice job of aligning with the athletic evaluation. I know one of the concerns was, we didn't want to make this evaluation too bulky to make more work for advisors. Advisors do this because they love working with kids and they love being involved with kids, but it also kind of streamlines the process to be more aligned with what the board is looking to do back in 2020 when the document was created. Again, there were just some holes, and I think we did a good job filling them. I think for four months worth of work going through that document, I think the document's better, I think we're better because of it. But again, I think every year, we're gonna take a deep dive into these things and keep asking, you know, how can we make this better, how can we continue to improve ultimately the experience for our student athletes and our co-curriculars? This is what it is. Mr. Futere?
Yeah, I would just say that the logistical aspect with the checkboxes, that's the logistical thing that most clubs have in common. The comments section is really important, because that's what that club or activity brought to the table, and you know, their finished products, what that looked like, their performances. So, that comments section is a very important part, because it covers what makes that club special, and what that supervisor or advisor did to make that club a success.
And it's those checkboxes plus the comments, all of that stuff added up makes for that satisfactory, I'm sorry, the three on the bottom, I can't see it from there.
The satisfactory, probationary.
Yes, so it would be the comments and those things in the checkboxes that make up that final score.
Correct. Because there's, like we talked about, there's so many things that don't appear in those checkboxes that that person may have done, that if you corner yourself just in those checkboxes, you're never gonna be able to get to. They could have done a wonderful community service project, and that never makes it in there. So, you know, how do we highlight what they're doing? I think the benefit is the discussions. I know last year, when we got to Coach Gadway talking about wrestling, he talked about some of the needs of wrestling program, and to be able to have that conversation and address those things, it's really the value in evaluation is the conversation. And how can the school, how can we better help you do your job? And what are some of the things that we need from you to continue to make the experience? Because at the end of the day, all these things are designed to do is make the experience for the student athlete or the student and the co-curricular better. That's the goal. And how do we do that together? This isn't an evaluator to the co-curricular advisor, this is as a team, how can we get better together? And I don't think it's too bulky, I think it's manageable, and I think it's something that, you know, the whole committee felt strongly in it. And we had some good, healthy debate and conversation, but I think we ended up in a relative spot. Mr. Bassin, you?
No, I think I covered it. And it's also, these evaluations are about what could we do to help grow your program too. That's what a big part of the conversation is also about. So, occasionally, when you're brainstorming at the end, you come up with great ideas for the next year, and then we gotta look for ways to support those good things to happen.
The other thing too is, a lot of times advisors will come up with great ideas, and it's like, oh, we want to do this in October, and there's like four different competing things that are gonna be going on in October. So, be able to kind of lay out the year and be like, hey, maybe if we do it in November, you can kind of spread this out a little bit too. So, having the conversations, like I said, with the advisors themselves of these clubs is where the, really, the gift of this that I think is gonna make a huge strides for this year.
First of all, compliments to the committee on, this whole document looks really good. In your conversation regarding annual review moving forward, you can talk about a timeline for doing that? Not that much. What I would hope you came up with is July, review and updates, so that we start the year-over-year with it in place rather than in October revision to it.
Yeah, yeah, the challenge was, the challenge was just finding dates to get everyone together. Obviously, when Mr. Bassin came on, I got together with him and were like, we need to take a look at this. It started with me going through the whole handbook and saying, you know, I think we have some things we need to look at, and Mr. Bassin was in support of getting those committees together. We were able to do that, people, I mean, we were in here many nights, working at it, looking at it. But some of those things, there was healthy debate. What should this look like? Where should we lay in on this? What's best for kids? And I think we came to really good, some really good conclusions. But I think being able to look at this every couple of years, I think is important to us. There's some other documents too that I'm gonna be working on this summer that I think are important to look at, that is like the code of conduct and the attendance policies, making sure that they align with each other. Like I said, this handbook did not align in many ways with what we currently have in books like the code of conduct. There's no mention in school suspension. Those documents have to align with each other, they can't be competing with each other. So, that just based on going through and looking at them and making sure that, you know, everyone's on board with what they should look like. So, next year, this summer, it'll be the code of conduct, make sure that that all aligns with what we're doing here. Now, the thing that I always like to try and end with a celebration, one of the goals when I came here, and I'm super proud to share with the board and the community, is we were recently named a school of excellence by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. What that means is to be a scholar-athlete team, your varsity teams are the only teams that are eligible, a varsity team has to have 75% or more of its roster with a 90 or higher GPA to qualify as a scholar-athlete team. DeepinTown High School has never earned that distinction, and this year is the first year that we're able to earn that. And that is a testament to our student athletes and our coaches and our district, and the things that we're doing that make that possible. Being an athlete is one thing, being a student athlete is the challenge. And to be able to look at that board, which is located on the way to our high school gym, and to look at every, each one of those certificates is one of our varsity teams that achieved that distinction. So, I'm super proud of that, we can win all the sectional championships we want, we can win state championships, this is really what it's all about. And to be presented with that at our Athletic Directors Conference by Robert Zayas, Dr. Zayas from the Executive Director of NISPA, super proud of that. So, I just want to highlight that. I think all the work that we've done, we continue to get better, and that's just one of the successes I wanted to share.
So, this is just one year?
That's one year.
Wow.
That was last year.
That's really impressive.
That was last year. And that, we put it in the gym on the way to hall, because it's right near our record boards, and I want the kids to see the importance, so we laid made them, and every time they walk down to that gym, they see those teams. Hopefully, we can beat that this year and end up with 25 teams, not 24. So, we just keep working on it. Thank you for your support. Any other questions? Sorry, Mr. Bassin, I went long.
Mr. Prichet, thank you for the presentation and for the entire committee on this. When we started this, the catalyst for this, I pushed for this several years ago, because we had a lot of communication issues, and we had parents that had concerns about how things were being done, or regardless of even, not even the poor intent by coaches or counselors, it was just communication. And we didn't have a mechanism really for managing a lot of this stuff. So, I think there's a lot of credit to the committee for working on this. I know that at the beginning, it was difficult, there were some conversations that were tough, particularly when it came to coaches, right? And the intent of this has never been to be punitive, or to catch people, or to, you know, address discipline. It really has been about identifying where the holes are, what we need to improve on, how to make this, make these programs better for our students, and it sounds like this is going in a great direction, and so I thank you for helping with that. In fact, the co-curricular part, I'm very happy as well, that part has probably taken me 15 years to have an effect on. When I first joined the board, I was a part of the audit committee, and we were going over dollars, and there were some concerns about how some things were being handled with clubs, because there isn't a formal way of doing it, and coming from business background, I thought, wow, some of this needs to be a little bit better managed. And then, I'm not kidding, about a few months later, we had a real legal issue with some miscooperation of funds. And so, it's taken a while. I also wanted to make sure that, you know, co-curricular activities are a big part of the enrichment of our kids. Arts and music, and that often gets dismissed. People feel that it's overshadowed by athletics, and like you pointed out, those parts, or Scott pointed out, where you write up some of that information, that not only allows us to understand what's going on in that program, but also us as a board, we get feedback on how we can help make it better. And we don't know what we need to allocate resources to something just because people talk about it until it's documented. So, I really appreciate that. It's a work in progress, I know it's not perfect, but I think it's good. Anybody have comments on it, presentation?
So, you talk about growth. Tonight, you'll be voting on a musical director and assistant director for the middle school drama club. So, there's a club that, you know, you started last year with, on a shoestring, and they proved themselves. They have 80-something students signed up for this year, and the board supported the efforts by working with Scott or the association and myself with an MOA, and appointing, tonight, both the assistant director and the musical director. So, that's how you grow things for kids.
Fantastic. Oh, warm, fuzzy, that's awesome. Okay, reports. Paul, you're up.
Yep, so, trying to keep it brief, busy. One of the things that we're gonna be kicking off really, really, really soon is
is the search for the new superintendent. Mr. Davey, who's our, our search consultant, will be here at any minute. Or most. So he'll be here at any minute to start working with the board on that. The other thing we did today is we worked with the PA systems. We had day automation, BCA in today. Jen, you know, is the lead on it. We had two of our principals in and everyone else. Basically, we're improving our PA system. Our PA system is having a tough time here. It's antique, it's old. And it doesn't work in some zones. Speakers are shot, clocks don't work. So we're gonna be replacing the clocks, which are a part of the speaker system. It's gonna tie into Raptor. It's gonna tie into the whole emergency system. If there's a lockdown, you'll hear for three minutes, there is a lockdown in place. There's a lockdown in place. Gives you all clears. It's bringing us up to where we need to be. In addition to that, we're able to redo our zones and we, and we'll have more control over the system. Instead of like the old system where you have to keep running over to TBS to come in to fix it, this system could be done in-house. Or it's, everything's on a computer. So we're working with those guys. And the project starts in November. They'll be laying wire and whatnot over at Cumberland Head. Cumberland Head will be online. We're hoping by the end of December, early January, they'll start the project in this building. While this building has the project going on during the second shift, we're gonna run Cumberland Head to see how it runs. Try to get any bugs or programming out so that we're in shape for when the main campus comes online. They're gonna run the legacy situation. We won't be tearing down the legacy equipment until the new stuff is online. And then the legacy goes out. One of the things we did look at, Gary here? No? But anyways, one of the things we did look at is, can we get money for those old antiquated clocks? And they are on eBay for a hundred fifty dollars. So who knows? Maybe, maybe if we sell enough of those, Jen's dream is we could, we could get a big Jumbotron. So we'll see about that. So Raptor is another thing we're working on. We've been testing out the system. We did a couple lockdowns. Something's good, something's bad, some other things I heard today since I've been here. So we're tweaking the Raptor system too. Every drill, we give more information of what goes right, what goes wrong. And that system's being tweaked. One of the things we just learned about today, RJ and myself, is that when a teacher has a class of, let's say math, math eight, they get the whole math eight list on Raptor instead of by period. So they gotta sort out for more kids are there for that period. So we gotta look at how to work it with our school tool and Raptor to give the right codes that we could, you know, maybe they get five lists, but at least they know what period they're in and they could go right to that list and start looking. Another thing, issue that we've had is substitutes. So this is like myself asking for permission from the board before I go off and do it and bring you an actual person. We have some long-term leaves. And there's a difference between a long-term leave and a per diem sub. If I'm a per diem sub, I walk in, they give me a lesson plan, I follow it, I have a nice day, I go home. If I'm a long-term sub, meaning I came in for someone's maternity leave, a long-term illness, I have to write lesson plans, I have to do report cards, I have to do parent conferences, I have to do everything that a full teacher does. So the, the deal is, we're paying our retired teachers that come back or even other people, a hundred forty, a hundred fifty dollars a day to do those kinds of things. Where the per diem sub makes the same thing. So it's not enticing for me to go grab somebody to do one of these jobs that involves soup to nuts, right? So what we've done, and, and Mr. Fairchild is probably the poster boy for it, is basically you call back your retirees. And what I'm asking for is permission to go up to step five. Because I know there's some good retirees out there. And if we were to do step five, it might be worth their while to put retirement on hold for four months, six months, eight months, whatever, and come in and do a great year. And then, you know, have that money to go to Florida in the winter or, you know, go see Yosemite next summer or whatever they wanna do. But they're not coming in, you know, I don't blame them for a regular per diem and we expect them to do the whole program. So what I'm basically just trying to get is a nod from you guys that if I bring in a retired teacher and ask for step five as an appointment for that long-term leave, will I get your support? You know, I mean, we go through all the other rigmarole too, but if there's any questions about why I would do this, I would love to.
So do you mind explaining what step five is to?
Step five, step five, I don't have the contract in front of me.
Yeah.
But it's enough that, it comes out to almost like, if you did look at it at a per diem, it's, it's over two, around two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a day, a day, which is a big difference than a hundred and forty. And, you know, with your retire pay and that, and you're not, you know, I think, I think it's.
So are we having an issue getting subs to fill that spot?
To fill the lo, to quality people, I could put a body in there. But a quality teacher for those kids. You know, you only get first grade once. You only get, you know, algebra once, or hopefully once. But, um, but, you know, those are things we gotta do. So if we could get good, quality people in, those kids will have a successful year, a good year, and a year hopefully with a teacher that is excited about being back in the room because it's fun to teach and they're being recognized for it.
Is this, is this something you've had to do at other schools?
Yes, we have.
So same, kinda same situation?
Yeah.
And in your experience, what is the outcome? What caused you to have done it?
So the outcome was, last year I did it, for example, in Argyle.
Okay.
We brought back, I brought back a retired Granville teacher to teach higher level math. And he nailed it. Kids loved him. And the kids were well on their way to success that it was almost because, and they missed him. He handled all the knuckleheads and did all the things that needed to be done. And the class didn't skip a beat. He did every, and he loved it. Packed his camper and headed to Florida right at the end. We also did it with a special ed teacher, because they're like Finding Hen's Teeth. So with the special ed teacher, same thing. She stayed, she finished the year for us. She loved it so much and with the waivers still in place, we were able to get her another year. So tho, those are the kinds of things that you could do that are successful. Otherwise, we would have had nobody that was qualified in math to teach that class. And we would have had nobody that was certified in special ed to teach that class. And because we had two veterans came in, they just slide right in. They look at the curriculum, they already know what they're doing, and they just chug right along. And, and they also have instant respect from the kids as well as the parents that we serve.
Jen, if we were to do something like that, what fund does that extra money?
It would come out of substitutes.
Which I don't have a question, but we'll figure it out.
What, what fund was that?
The general fund.
It comes out of the general fund?
Yeah.
So my only question in that would be, we're gonna, if, if you bring in, so you brought in ten of those retired teachers, should you displace ten of the subs?
No.
How do we keep people loyal to do that?
No, this is, this would only be for long-term position. So we're talking maternity leaves, medicals. We're not displacing the subs. If we have a certified sub already in-house, we're using them. We don't have certified subs in-house.
So on average?
So, so for example, we have a situation at Cumberland Head. I think where you have three teachers that you're gonna be missing real soon. One's out, another one's going any day now, and another one shortly after. To have a certified teacher in that first grade classroom, we needed to pull a teacher out of the reading room so that those kids could get a certified sub. It wasn't like a sub could do the job. So in essence, we're missing out on the reading room a little bit. But by bringing in the retiree, I could leave that teacher in the reading room. So remediation could be done for kids that need it. And I have a qualified sub in the room with, with those little first graders whose parents were very happy to have a qualified teacher. Because you, like I said, you get first grade once. You want it to be the best year you can for those kids.
Well, I could definitely say, oh, it's better to have, you know, a stable person who's qualified to do it, but you don't wanna kick, kick your subs either.
No, no, they're gonna be working, believe me, we need them.
How many, uh, long-term do we have on average? I know it fluctuates, but.
It fluctuates. Right now, I think we're gonna be hitting a little bit of a peak due to maternities and some people out for some medical. So you're, you're looking at most usually one or two a year. Some years with district, this size might be four, maybe five. In the old days, you had Platteberg State next door. You had two-hundred kids looking for a job. You could pay them fifty dollars and they would've come in to do that job just so they could prove themselves and get recognition, possible future job, references. Those kids don't exist anymore. So this area was very, very rich at one time in highly qualified substitutes. They're not producing them. Or if they do produce them, they could get all the work they want down on Long Island, Westchester, Buffalo, the southern tier. They go back home. So times have changed, we gotta change a little too.
Any thoughts on what the plan might be if we already have one of those people in place? You know, because like, in theory, we have people doing it for a certain pay now. If we already have them in place and we implemented this new thing?
Do we have a retiree?
Yeah.
I don't believe at this time we have a retiree in place teaching a long-term sub.
Okay. I mean, you understand the question, right? Like if we already had somebody in place, like are we looking at retroactive or putting them, somebody else on?
I, I guess if we had someone, we would.
Okay.
But we don't. Right now, what we, the only long-term sub we have is a person that's in, we pull from the reading room to put, I believe, a first grader, second grader.
And the reason, reason we're having this conversation is because we're in that deficit.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the game plan, right?
Of course, sure.
You know, obviously, you know, like even this person you pulled in from the reading room, in theory, if you had to take that person, now you put them in basically a teacher's role, should they be?
No, that's a regular teacher under contract.
Oh, okay, it's already a regular teacher.
It's a regular teacher.
It's not a long-term sub.
Yeah, oh, no, that's, that's one of our real people. That we would like to have back in that position.
Good, understood.
Just, so you know, the district I work in has had this situation the last couple of years. And we ended up with a physics class last year being taught by a person who does not have any college education because they could not find a body. And this year, we've got a person doing chemistry with one year of college. And basically, the kids lose out on the region's test that they don't, can't do their labs to take them. So it's, it's really an important step to value people that have given their time to the district over the years who can help us through these situations. And I know it costs a little extra money, but in the grand thing, scheme of things, it's not, I don't think it'll be an horrendous amount, but, you know. And it leaves a reading teacher teaching reading to the kids that really need that instruction at the elementary level.
That's my question. And regardless of whether it was a retiree, anybody we would bring in, we would bring into that position, whether it was a retiree or not, would be, would have the opportunity to have that same benefit, correct? Would it just be for retirees or would?
This would be retirees at step five. If I was gonna get a regular certified teacher, maybe we could give them step one off to get go. I think that would be worth it. But there's, retirees do deserve a higher compensation. You know, but if there was actually a certified teacher out there that wanted a job, they could be here at step one, that would be a problem either. We have, we have positions.
Good questions. Anybody else? So as far as the critical nature of this, I don't remember, do we have a resolution in here? Ready to go or should we?
No, all I, I have to do, because you said sub rate.
Yeah.
All I have to do is when I come back to, let's say, we'll go to appoint John Smith, it's, I'm asking to appoint John Smith for this position, long-term sub, for the, the leave of X person X. So that's the duration that they're able to fill the slide at step five. And that would be the thing, you approve it, and then payroll takes over from there.
So we're okay with approving it at the next board meeting? Just wait a second.
Or anytime I bring a person before you.
Okay.
So all I'm asking for permission is to do this up to step five. And then I would give you my recommendation. And you either say yea or nay. But I don't wanna bring it to you before I get an idea that it's gonna be a yea.
So you're not even asking for a resolution? This is just, hey, if I bring a sub by?
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Well, that's what I was, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
We don't need a resolution or anything.
All right.
Resolution's when we actually hire somebody.
Everybody agree with the concept? Good to go? All right.
All right. Hey, go fill those holes.
Will you do that, Jen?
I'll figure it out.
It's not, could be that many.
We have a fund balance that we can work with, I think.
And that's kind of what I was curious about. There was, there was some balance that we were discussing.
We have to deal with that fund balance.
That's it, right?
Anyone else?
No, that'd be enough for.
All right, so there you go.
Yep, so we, I was gonna touch on the capital project a little bit, PA system, but Mark did that. Also be having a capital project meeting next week with Burn Your Car coming in for the big project, the PA system, but the, the big project as well to start going over the additional classroom and the playground and all that good stuff, very preliminary stuff. Get some ideas of what we're looking for. So that'll be going on. We had our audit, audit committee. So Patty's gonna be discussing that. I'll jump in when she needs me. And, but it went very well. Everything was good. Other than that, we will be having our, that was our external audit. Now we're gonna be having our internal audit. And I know Justin mentioned having the co-curricular clubs audited. And they will be in the next couple of weeks. Carl Saefark will be coming in. He's our internal auditor. And he has decided he wants to look at the co-curricular clubs. So that will be coming up within the next two weeks. He should be here, should be here in the next week to start going over those things. And he'll be doing training too. He's very, very, very good at this. And he'll, I'm sure, give Justin some insight on some things that he might not know. And he does handbooks, he's wonderful. He's a great tool to use and ask questions too, and he's been doing it for a long time. So very, very good, very good asset. And that's about it.
I know, I, I know I brought it up, and I know we've had some people bring it up. But in your meetings, when we're talking about the capital project coming up, are you guys looking for kind of interim solutions as far as the playground is concerned? So kids don't completely lose access to a playground during the capital project?
There is no capability to put up a new playground while the old, I mean, it takes a long time to put up a playground, unfortunately. And it's an insurance liability just to throw something up and say, play on that, hopefully you don't get hurt. So if, if you have to be really cautious of what you're doing.
Yeah.
So there won't be a playground, there's not gonna be a slide, there's not gonna be swing sets.
Nothing to climb on, nothing to?
No, because that all takes groundwork, that takes, and that's exactly what we're gonna be doing with for the new playground. So we don't want, it wouldn't be any faster if I do it for a sub, for an internal playground if I'm trying to do the new playground. So we're, I mean, I'm sure we'll come up with some ideas of things for children to do, use, all of that good stuff. I did bring in Burn Your Cars' attention that this is the main focus of the project, is the playground. So they will do everything they possibly can to move it along as fast as they can. But I don't want them cutting corners either, because this is.
Absolutely, understood. That's just, you know, I mean, obviously, having kids in the elementary school, having kids in the preschool, you know, understanding the, the net benefits of having equipment to run, climb, jump, swing on for, you know, little kids. I mean, that, that is one of my biggest concerns with this capital project, frankly, is having kids who aren't devoid of the playground and that outlet for such a long period of time. And we've kind of discussed the idea that we'll have, we'll come up with some, you know, a temporary solution. I'm just really curious to hear like kind of more solid plans for what those ideas are.
It is two years down the road.
Yes.
So it, it, we will, I'm sure, put our minds together and come up with some good ideas. The UPK is gonna be all set. They have their little playground in the back. We updated that this summer. So they'll be good to go. But to put up a temporary, there really isn't such a thing as a temporary playground, unfortunately. But like I said, we're gonna, we, we did, I'll just let you know, I did a capital project at Shaysie and we didn't have a playground for a year and everybody did okay. We, we, I mean, it, it was worth the wait. And Mr. Fairchild can attest to that. It was amazing. But, you know, we will do the very, very best we can to do whatever we can for the kids.
Sometimes there's an advantage to it is you authorize a plethora of recess toys that normally we never would think about getting. So, you know, it's like go to the catalog in class and start picking out recess toys that, you know, more than the three rubber balls.
So, I mean, I guess my concerns really stem from the fact that, you know, if you read the studies on those climbing, jumping activities, how they help kids as far as, you know, anxiety, how they help kids as far, you know, getting that energy out that is pent up while they sit in a classroom for eight hours a day. Like I said, that, that is a concern of mine. And I know it's a concern of, you know, staff members, people have come up and given public comment on it. I just wanna make sure that we're addressing.
You know, and then there's the wonder, I mean, I, you know, I've been in schools where there's climbing walls in the gym. You know, maybe there's something that. You know, maybe there's something that as we move forward in the project, we identify some things we could put in our gyms that'll enhance the gyms down the road, but we.
We did throw around the idea of a bounce house every now and then, renting a bounce house.
Yeah.
But you can't do that in the middle, you have to do it inside.
In the middle of winter, but yeah.
You can't go outside, obviously, but.
Big snow pile, pile in the middle of the.
Big snow pile, yeah, we've got a lot of snow piles.
Turn the elementary gym into an obstacle course once a week or something.
Sure. And I think that's the sort of stuff that people want to hear about, right? Like obviously, there's going to be this deficit, and you might not be able to fix it every day. Right, you know, have something out there, but those types of plans, I think people would like to hear about.
Okay.
That's all we have.
That's all you got?
Address the rest of Patty.
Okay. Moving forward. You're up.
I'm just going to start that this morning, you know. First off, we had a really, really good start to our high school year, our first five weeks for me. Like, we're great due to our educators and students working together, maybe such a good first five weeks. We've implemented like pretty immediately the seven mindsets, SCL curriculum into our weeks, every Monday. We have been doing the social, emotional health, like education meetings during many of the periods during the day. And it has, like, many students have connected with it and participated in that education of the social, emotional sub-mindsets curriculum. We also have increased our partnership with Ready for Real and CUPS to provide additional opportunities for our students in college career readiness. We are providing paid work internships to twenty-five students in areas of interest with local businesses and career fields, as well as engaging with the key lessons to increase student awareness and capacity of entering the workforce. These will also receive, students will also receive instructions and guidance on successful completion of the work readiness credential they'll be performed at the Pecunetown High School this spring. We have had, we had the excellent homecoming week. Many students participated in the spirit week, and the, the energy around the pep rally and the homecoming games and dances itself were great. The, like, energy and student, like, togetherness was awesome during homecoming. And last week, we had over a hundred students participate in the PSEPT during school. And students had the opportunity to practice, to take the practice college entrance exam free of charge and street fight very easily and ran excellently and smoothly due to our counseling team during it. And it made it all happen very easily. And the high school looks forward to keeping this momentum as we move forward into the next five weeks. For Pecunetown Middle School, I'll start off with the homecoming and spirit week. Teachers and parents who shap, like, we want to make teachers and parents who shaper the dance first and foremost, as student council advisors for organizing everything and making it all happen very easily and well. And many students had a great time participating in the pep, Friday pep rally. And students are looking forward to participating in the middle school homing dance October twenty-seventh, the Pecunetown, our seventh, sixth graders. The drama club members are already busy rehearsing and working for their upcoming show next month. The show will run on November eleventh, seven PM, and November twelfth, two PM. It is already, has a plus four behind it, and it's looking great already. On October sixth, the VCS music, students in seventh through twelfth will attend the first North Country, sorry, it already happened, sorry. The first North Country Music Summit during the day. Students had the opportunity to learn from master music musicians. And during the session, students learned a bit about instrument repair, warm-up techniques, musical skill, just many things that pertain to their craft and allow them to gain an understanding and enjoyment of their music and their music careers so far. BMS is also implementing preventative measures to help our students foster habits to strengthen and maintain their physical and mental health. Titus, our prevention counselor, is implementing the second step, SCL curriculum, under seventh grade home and careers about twice a week, which will include in November for the fall semester students. The fall semester students are starting learning about ways to develop healthy habits, goal setting, homecoming roadblocks to developing growth mindset. There will be lessons on harassment, bullying, empathy, kindness. And there will, this month, sixth graders are going to be participating in the Catch My Breath Anti-Vape Program in ELA. In this program, students will learn the hazards of vaping to hopefully prevent any addiction and use of it in early grades to just root out that problem as early as possible. Students in, and will be also learning about just vaping tobacco, like, and reading literacy and just understanding the issue in general, that just may be as well. All this activity, students, amidst all this activity, students in their classes are working hard. They've completed the Fast Bridge assessment, and the five-week progress reports are going out this week. And BMS is able to report that they have had a ninety-five percent attendance rate since the first day of school for, sorry, Pecunetown Elementary School. The school has had a first grade, a great first month. The elementary teachers and staff have been doing a great job. They're the essence of community and belonging at the Pecunetown Elementary School this past month. And we have had the welcome back assemblies and expectation meetings and all that. A Jared Campbell presentation, and of course, Donuts with Grown Ups this past Friday morning. And all this just developing like a good sense of community and respect. The Jared Campbell presentation was a, was really a concert for the kids. He is a award-winning singer and songwriter from Upstate New York. He travels the country to perform for hundreds of schools. His songs are unlively, but he'll be thought-provoking for, especially for BEES students. His power of music reaches to all kids and has adapted to be the needs of three-year-olds all the way up to eleven-year-olds at our elementary school. Strong attendance is incredibly important to the success of elementary students. And we've, they feel that the items just mentioned greatly support our students wanting to be at school itself. And to add to this, our teams and teachers offer engaging, vast opportunities for students. Some examples are window art, fall crafts, light bright, excitement, movement adventures, outdoor adventures, board games, diamond arc, some fall crafts, and of course, a bunch of board. And was able to mention. And at BEES, we are striving to improve reading scores all the time. One way we are doing this is provide ninety minutes of daily reading in the classroom with an additional forty minutes of targeted reading instruction called WINTIME. This stands for what I need time. This week, our providers and teachers are conducting our Fast Bridge testing. And then next week, we will be with the data team to ensure that all students are in the best groove to meet their needs. Lastly, our teachers have been doing a great job of blending character strong. Our new social, emotional learning curriculum. The lessons focus on three key elements, be kind, be strong, be well. The instruction centered on one character trait each month. We started this year with kindness. We are currently focused on perspective. We look forward to a successful year with this curriculum. And finishing off with Cumberland Elementary School's report. There have been a number of exciting things happening at CHES. Teachers and students are establishing their rituals and routines important for continuing, establishing like for the rest of their school careers. And they have been able to make a great school experience for these students. Fourth graders have had a unique experience. The Six Nation Iroquois Cultural Center in Orona, New York, on this, on this field trip, students were able to experience a Native American story, explore their own impacts and paintings. They even toured an outside lean to and also learned how Native Americans cooked in a fire pit. This field trip ties into the fourth grade social studies curriculum. It was a nice way to get students excited about history and about social studies. We have had several other fun field trips planned. The kindergarten pre-K classes are taking their traditional trip to Rolfe's Apple Orchard. Since our pre-K three-year-old children are too little to ride the bus, their teachers have planned to have the field trip come to CHES itself. Rolfe's is bringing the pumpkin patch to CHES. Three-year-olds will be able to choose a pumpkin from the yard. Families are invited to the special picnic being held. Our second graders are going to Wild Culture Center in Tupper Lake on October seventh, or October eleventh as well. October first, the Pizza Hut Booklet Reading Incentive Program started at CHES. Students received one free pizza ticket every twenty days. They read out the book. People are reading incentive, and we looked forward to its continued success this year. The Scholastic Book Fair is coming to the library October twenty-third through the twenty-eighth. Students in pre-K through fifth will have the opportunity to shop for books before school and during the library periods. The proceeds of the sale go towards purchasing board books from the library as well. The CHES Student Council, under the direction of Mrs. Bishop in District, in District of Lake. Their first task will be reading the spirit week for CHES. And they will also, they also would like to develop a program in which student councils and boardsters read to the pre-K students. We look forward to seeing their positive contributions to the school community and the community itself. The PTO is planning a trick-or-treat at Cumberland Head on October twenty-eighth from eleven to three AM. This will be the third annual event, and it's always been very popular. This year, there'll be a food truck and additional games for students who take PTO, always going to be the extra amount of support from CHES. It is very important to the community, especially on Cumberland Head. It's awesome every year. On October twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh, teachers in grades three through five will attend just another hour professional development session held by Miss Stotter, sorry. And Miss Swanson. Teachers will be trained on the context of the New York State Science Examer process. And I think that is all I have for all four of the schools. Thank you.
That's all, you sure?
Thank you.
That's a lot. I have one recommendation.
Yeah, sorry.
If, if you get any, any information from the administrators, just, and you don't like it, just grab a red marker and give them your grade and your feedback. This is your chance, man, take it. Take your chance and give it right back to them, so it's not, it's not adequate. The other one is, I'm going to have to get you a Dolphins sticker for that water bottle that you have there because that Raiders is great. All right, man, that was, that was a lot. Great, great stuff, it's good to hear. Committee reports. You're up.
So the audit committee met with an external auditor, Michael Boras, from the Bose and Wolf Group, the PAs, to discuss the financial reports for the end of six thirty twenty-three. So Mr. Boras explained really everything was going well. He thought the reports were good. In the general fund, now, one of the things we had spoke about, the excess revenues from six thirty twenty-three were increased to seventeen point eight six percent for the twenty-three twenty-four budget. It's a one point one two percent increase from last year. So this puts the general fund, which is supposed to be four percent unappropriated fund balance limitation. And it was the only significant finding that Mr. Boras found when he did this audit. And it's over the unassigned fund balance totals nine million, four hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So we spoke about it. We, I'll talk about it with Jen and everything, and we don't get fined for this. We can get a slap on the hand and a leather. We discussed how to work through the money. And, and what we're going to do is we're going to implement the comprehensive multi-year approach to manage and reduce the unassigned fund balance as well as use three million, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the upcoming capital project. So before I go to cafeteria energy, is there any questions on that part?
In layman's terms, we have more money than what we need.
Yes.
Yeah.
And which is a distinct.
We've, yes, we've been very fortunate to have our COVID monies coming in, as we all know.
Right.
Very large amounts of money. Those grants do run out as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and in perspective for a whole year, Jen?
Yeah.
What does that money amount to in payrolls?
So if, if we were at our four percent, which is a little over two million dollars, we wouldn't even be able to make it through a month of payroll.
Right.
So, to that perspective. I know it sounds like we're way overfunded, but when you put it in perspective, just in payroll, I'm not talking about paying for health insurance, which is another million-dollar bill every month. If we, we don't even, if we were at the four percent, we would not have a month's worth of operating expenses. So that, so, so yes, four percent is what the state recommends, but even Mr. Boras stated, it's not practical because it would not give us enough cushion if something were to happen. It, it wouldn't give us much time.
Yeah, if something went drastically wrong, we'd be in trouble.
So, well, I mean, obviously, I agree, I agree with your assessment of the four percent and what little it gives us for wiggle room, but we do answer to our taxpayers.
Yep.
And, and so, you know, the nine, nine million is eighteen percent of, of our annual budget program. So how does that compare to the last year?
It went up one point one percent.
Yeah, one point one two percent.
All right, so then the next question.
That was because of the COVID fund.
And that's, that's due to the COVID.
So I want to make sure we have a story, so.
Right, yes. And if you, if you read the, the letter that I wrote into the audit, it explains that because of that money, we've been able to pay things out of there that we would, if we continue with them, we're going to have to take out of the general fund.
Got it.
Because the money goes away.
Right.
And we've planned for some of that. We've talked about that here before with VHSN and our crisis counselors. We've built that into our budget. We've built the cap courses, continuing to pay for those in our budget so far. But there's other things that if we want to continue, this money only lasts until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. That is it. And the fact that we're putting three point two million dollars into our capital project, that is a large amount coming out of that fund balance appropriately. So we had said we were going to use it, and we're going to use it so the taxpayers don't have to pay additional money for our capital project. Because this capital project is going to be, not, not have to increase our tax rate at all.
Keeps it fly.
Look, in your opinion, what would the percentage be? Like if, you know, like, because obviously, we're saying seventeen or whatever is too high, and four percent is too low. Like, in your opinion, from a financial standpoint, where would you feel comfortable?
The sweet spot?
With the, yeah, I mean, because I don't know, I mean.
Oh, well, you're talking, I mean, eight to ten would be wonderful.
Got it.
It consistently, just so you have, I mean, it's a plan. When you think about it, paying your payroll, you only have a, even at your home, if you have a month's worth of expenses, that, that month goes pretty quick.
But it sounds like we're going to be at about ten percent by the time the three point two and the other stuff goes through, right?
Exactly.
So we're going to be in the ballpark.
Yes, we're, we're, we're going to be where we more should be.
I, I just want to make sure that at this table, we have the conversation of where the money is, why it's there, and what we're doing about it so that. the money is, why it's there, and what we're doing about it so that, that taxpayers understand our process, that we're not just like drunken sailors spending cash.
But you know, that idea of managing the payroll for a, for a month, you know, and that 4% just not being enough, that's good for taxpayers to hear, right? I think this is why we're keeping a little bit extra because.
But we're subject to what the state, state laws are, right? Now, in practice, the state doesn't penalize you if you're like around 8% or so because, because of that.
Yeah, they don't penalize you for running up.
Jen, if you were five years playing on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's.
It's in the letter.
Yes.
So the 1.1% increase, is that 1.1 percentage of the budget or of the overage?
It's of the fund balance. The fund balance grew by 1.1%.
Of, of last year's fund balance, so.
Right, we were at 16.86, I think.
Oh, that's a good question. So, all right, so the percent growth as a whole budget was, was small. Okay.
Yes, it didn't grow a lot.
Okay.
It's about a quarter percent of the total.
Yes.
But, but because of the fact that we do have, we are able to pay things out of SIRS and ARP and everything else, we did not have to use our general fund monies, which is a good thing. But we aren't, that, that, that pot of money is just about, SIRS money is gone. We've already expensed all of that. And some of our other smaller reserve grants from COVID are all spent. So we are on our last group of, I think we have three left. I think it's three grants left to finish, but I said it was a third.
Okay.
Yeah.
And everywhere, we do try to help our taxpayers.
Yeah, and the capital project.
Money out of there, out of the general fund to make sure that they're, you know, we're not driving crazy. All right, so the other thing I like is the cafeteria. So the percentage increase for breakfast was 40.5%. And there was an increase of 9.9% for lunch. So that really outdid, like, when we had COVID, there was no grab, you know, like, they're, they're sitting down, they're having their meals, they're doing all their snack programs. The snack program was reinstated in 2022, 23 for a total of 314,564 snacks served as of June 30th, 23. So I'm really happy with that and stuff, so. And we spoke about retirements, health insurance, retirees' needs. We talked about electric buses, the good and the bad. And I heard some things about other people that had electric buses and the problems they had too. I think that was it. We talked about ELT trips.
ELT?
Yeah, so it was a good meeting.
Uh, you guys, did you guys talk at all about, you know, we've been adding funds, money to reduce the liability to Gatsby, right? We increased those percentages for.
Call it TRS?
Yeah.
Yep, as Joseph, we, we are increasing our TRS reserve in this. Here, I'm almost at my max. We can only go up to 10% of our total payroll. And next year should be, I should max out. So we'll be maxed out on our TRS reserve.
Okay, just wanted to make sure the rest of the board understands that we're doing that. Good. Excellent. Thanks. Any other questions for? Good to go? What was that? Maybe audit. Anybody here for public comment? No? All right. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommenced to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Motion, please.
Motion, Rick.
Rick, second. Questions, discussions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommenced to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and 504 recommendations dated 10/10/23. Motion, please.
I'm voting Patty.
Patty, second.
Rick.
All right, Rick. Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Personnel. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommenced to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, ELL, training, and tenure be in or hereby approved. Motion, please.
I'm voting Patty.
Patty, second. Rick? Discussions? Questions? Sir?
So looking through here, I see we have, looks like six teacher aides, student aides. That would be fine.
Yeah. Five, yeah, five teacher aides, two staff school monitors for the cafeteria.
Do you want Mr. Besen to elaborate on that?
Yeah.
Basically, they're choosing to move on to some other days. You know, when we ask them other way out, there's some better pay opportunities elsewhere. And sometimes it's just the job wasn't what they wanted.
People we tend to have a high turnover.
It's, it's a revolving door.
It's a transient position for sure.
So it's a good question, because in our agenda setting meeting, we did have this conversation after talking about the retiree, increase in pay concern as well. What we don't want is our staff to be missing aid, right? They're hard to get and leave them in that lurch. So we did have an internal conversation about maybe we have to raise that teacher aide amount. I mean.
Well, we, we just did their, their contract and raised it, raised it significantly. And we haven't found that it did any good.
How long ago did we raise it?
July 1st.
July 1st.
And is that, is the news, is the news out enough for people to understand that? I mean, how would you compare to the rest of the region?
Everyone's suffering for teaching, teacher aides.
Is that right?
As well as subs. It's just, there's other opportunities out there and.
Well, and I notice like right here would say, you know, for like one of the resignations, you know, grade six, I mean, I'm kind of curious, it's like, I mean, are we losing five aides from the elementary school? Or is this spread out between all four buildings or?
And some of these people, I don't even know if they started, some of them.
Yep.
They, they, you know, they say they're gonna take the job and then they're no-shows.
Yep.
It happens unfortunately. And same with the cafeteria monitors. And the food service operator, I don't think she started either. I'm not sure.
And obviously, we have state mandated aides that are required to have on-site. And again.
Right, and they, and they get the priority of what aides are in-house.
Yep. So that doesn't put us into a situation where we're missing out on state mandated aides?
We have aides that sometimes help us with, that aren't state mandated. Maybe they're helping us at a grade level.
Yep.
To support the teachers in the rooms who could use it.
Sure.
But then unfortunately, we, we probably, let's say we have a kindergarten aide. That's one thing. If we have to unfortunately pull the kindergarten aide, which we wouldn't like to do.
Yeah.
Because we have one that's state mandated based on an IEP or classroom configuration, then we have to do that. So that's why we're desperately always looking for aides. We're putting out our school newsletter soon. And one of the, the little ads in there is, please look for employment here. We're looking for aides. We're looking for bus drivers. We're looking for food service operator. We're looking for substitute teachers. So, you know, we're trying to get the word to the community. You know, there's opportunities here. And then sometimes people, when they get in these buildings, they are, you know, they just see hundreds of kids around them. It's like, it's daunting.
Yeah.
And they decide that they want to do something else.
How does our compensation compare to other districts?
We're, we're in the ballpark with the other districts. It's not like people are saying, hey, I'm leaving you to go to Plattsburgh. They'll leave us to go to, let's say, a private sector job. Because the private sectors, I mean, my son left working for the Warren County to go to the private sector. Tier six is worthless. And you could do better with 401Ks. I mean, matching 401K. So until tier six ties up, many people used to work, especially in these jobs, because there was a little bit of a retirement benefit at the end and good health benefits. But now, you know, things are not all benefit-wise. So it becomes more competitive with the less people out there.
So it's, so it's a supply and demand thing. The increase in pay hasn't done anything yet, but we need a solution because we can't leave teachers without age, we can't leave kids without support. So do we have to have a conversation about bringing the rate up again?
If, if we do do that, you gotta remember, we would need to move the rate for every person that's currently working for us too.
I understand.
So.
If, if that would prevent us from having another, another resignation list of five teacher's aides on the next board.
But some, some of these guys never were no-shows.
And that's, and that's fair. That's what I'm saying. Like, next, next to all these, it's tough to get visibility on where they came from, what building they're in.
Yeah.
How many were no-shows? How many were no-shows?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll get that to you.
Okay.
All right, so you can see better resolution than they are.
Cool.
Can I ask, how many, how many teacher's aides do we have across the district?
There would be more. Polly here?
Um, around 78.
And how many have you lost so far this year?
I really don't know. We've had a lot, a lot left. Again, like Mr. Besen said, some come in immediately, change their mind, or haven't come, ended up coming. We continue, we put out.
This number looks the same pretty much every time.
Does that agree with you?
Number looks the same pretty much every month.
Yeah. I hate to put you on the spot, but based on IEPs, how many are we mandated to have?
I don't have that in my mind either, but obviously most of our, like, right now, we have, ELT aides are not mandated, they're sponsored, so.
Okay.
Because we have to cover our mandated spots.
So why don't, why don't we do this? Let's, this is obviously a serious conversation.
Sure.
Let's ask superintendent to work with the team, look at options and solutions, and we'll address it at the next board.
I'll get back to you, who these guys are and how many people she has.
Can we also ask that, see if we can get some type of spreadsheet report on how many people are no-shows? Kind of break down what's, what school aid, you know, to see if we see a pattern or something.
Good idea. Maybe even the regional breakdown of, of regional pay as well, so we can have a good assessment. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
We, we just negotiated a support contract.
Very good, a support contract.
Yeah.
The contract that we negotiated with the support staff over the term of that contract is awfully darn close to a million dollars.
Yep.
So I, you know, teacher's aides have already been, you know, they want what they wanted to get.
Yep.
Now.
Yeah, but who's, who's representing the aides in that group? Nobody's, nobody's really representing the aides.
Well, the, the contract was done.
They're, they're, they're in the contract.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. And.
They could have the representation on the minute.
But, you know, unfortunately, in my opinion, if we have several school districts that are all in the same situation, right? You know, everyone's fighting for it.
Sure.
We want to try to entice people to come here.
Right.
And if that means, you know, hey, we, we need to be slightly above the rest of the bar.
Well, we can't, we can't answer that until we have the information.
Exactly, yeah.
So, well, why don't we table that for now? And we'll let, we'll do some homework.
The hiring may not go back.
We don't know.
It takes a very special person to work in a school. I worked support staff in 22 years.
Okay.
It takes an extremely special person to be a teacher's aide. It takes a special person to be working in the support staff. You can't just, I, I, and I apologize if I'm getting a little. You can't just say, well, I'm gonna give you $2 an hour more than any other school in the area and expect it.
I, I agree, I agree with you, I agree with you entirely. So here's my concern. My concern is that that special person may find that doing the special job that they want to do isn't enough for them. And so they don't want to come here, even if it, even if they wanted to. So we don't know right now, without a little more research, if, if that, that special person would say, hey, you know what? With a little more, it makes it worthwhile. Otherwise, I still have to, I have to find a job that's better for me. But your points will take. I mean, you're right. Like, a lot of positions in education, right? People do it because they, they love. Exactly, exactly. But.
You don't do it for the money.
Right, right. Let's, but it's, it's gotta be something that you can work with.
Right.
So let's make sure we add it to next, next month's agenda.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I'd be terribly concerned about re, going back after a contract settled, a large unit for a small group of that unit. Oh, you're gonna break.
Well, of course.
We have to look at it.
No question about it. No question about it.
But, but Ed, I agree. I think this is a much bigger conversation to have, and having some, some more data would be good before we have it.
Yep.
Sorry, Mr. Superintendent, to the extent that I'll, I'll want to understand, maybe others, what impact does this have on operations when you finally tally the numbers? I, I probably truly wouldn't have an understanding of, of how it impacts a teacher in the classroom, whether it be in an integrated classroom versus an aide that does something else.
Well, right.
I'd, I'd want to have a, if you can, when we do talk about this next time, maybe a couple, three minutes on.
So impact.
Yeah, me, me understanding that if I'm 78 and I'm minus five, which I know we're more than that, how does that impact teacher to teacher? For the strong teacher, maybe not at all. For someone who has an extra aide or two, obviously a great deficit that you have to now make up for. And that'd be my next, actually, obviously, the next, second word effect is, what are you doing to fill that vacuum immediately? Or is it just kind of lay out there open and they, they struggle and suffer along and they're, they're essentially a wounded animal until you can hire somebody else? I'd want to understand these things because I, I don't understand them, so.
All right.
Thank you for that.
It's a tough one. Because they're not there, they're not there.
I know.
Right, but we'll see what we can do. We can't, yeah, we'll try. Okay, all right. Any other questions on the personnel? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right. Section eight. All right.
Ed, do we have a different?
Yes. Section, right here. That's in section eight. Good timing. Mark, do you want to do the honors there on the tenure recognition?
So in that motion, we granted tenure to Kathleen Trembley. Kathleen's here. Kathleen, you heard about all the shortages? Hopefully you only get tenure once and it's here. Okay, don't be moving on. Congratulations.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommenced to the Board of Education with the following resolutions on his consent agenda. Contract, grant procurement supervisor's side letter of understanding with PTA musical director and assistant director, side letter of understanding with support staff, longevity, MOU with support staff for ELT and athletic mergers be in or hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion, Greg.
Okay.
I'll second.
John? Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right. Financial. All right. Financial. Resolve that the Interim Superintendent of Schools recommenced to the Board of Education with the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, transfers, grants, and TRS reserve be in or hereby approved. Motion?
Rick, second.
Okay, go ahead. Any questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Troy Anderson?
President.
Adreah Bean?
Yes.
Dwayne Bebo?
Present.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gabway?
Yes. I'm assuming the president's a yes.
So that's what I was just gonna.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
My word is yes. It's for being in the military. You hear your name, Anderson, you say, "President, sorry to major." And that's it. And I get you by.
Patty LePlum?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
C.
Richard Sears?
We, y'all, the language you wanted. All right. Okay. TRS reserve. Hey, and thank you for that update on the reserve information. That's great. Corrective action plan. Oh, wait, did I miss something? Oh, yeah, audit report. Thank you. Resolve that the Audit Committee recommenced to the Board of Education to accept the audit report prepared by Bulwars and Woods CPAs for the 2022-23 school year, which needs to be filed with the state no later than 10/15/23. Motion, please.
I'll motion.
Okay, John, second. Chris, questions? Roll call.
Troy Anderson?
Yes.
Adreah Bean?
Yes.
Dwayne Bebo?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gabway?
Yes.
Patty LePlum?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Yes.
All right. And now, result that the Board of Education approves the corrective action plan 2023-001. Access fund balance be in or hereby approved. Motion?
I'll motion.
Patty, second. Dwayne, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Additional items to discuss? Anything, anyone desperately needs to throw out there? All right, if you have any thoughts afterwards, send them to myself and John, and we'll put it on the next board agenda. Public comment. Anybody need to speak? Public comment. Forever hold your peace. All right. And we are going to executive session, so John, can I appoint you clerk pro temp?
You really want me to?
Yeah.
Yes. Resolve that the Board of Education appoint Mr. Fairchild as clerk pro temp for this meeting. Motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, Patty.
Thanks, Patty.
Second?
Second.
Who was that?
Adreah.
Okay. There might be a vote after this? Maybe? All right. We'll see. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Executive session. All right.
Do you need a motion for the executive session?
Hold on, hold on. I got to motion the other one. Resolve that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and the employment history of a particular person or persons. Motion?
Motion.
Which one was it? Second, Chris. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
And.
And we are bringing in Dr. Davy.
Mrs. Jockler.
And Mrs. Jockler as well. Anybody else? Besen, if you want to bring in. That's it.
Oh, Polly.
Oh, Polly. And Ms. Tarran is coming in as well. Thank you for coming and your patience.